Are we good?
Yep.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this meeting in the Lakota Board of Education. Jenny, would you please call roll?
This is Casper.
Here.
Mrs. O'Connor. Mr. Parnell.
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Level.
Level. It's all good. I'm here. Either way, I'm here.
Changed Brad's name.
Something, something just happened to my... Okay, did somebody stop sharing their screen?
Oh, there we go.
Linda, I believe you are on mute.
Unmute, Linda.
There you are.
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
Yeah, unmute.
Good. Great. First up, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Jenny?
This is Casper.
I'm sorry, Jenny, it was Julie who, I should have said it my name. It was Julie who did it first.
And Linda was second.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Yes.
And then was it Linda who seconded?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Yes.
This is Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Parnell.
Yes.
Mr. Level.
Yes. That moves us on to our next session, section on the agenda. Board President comments. I do not have any this evening. We'll move on to Superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Level. Just as everybody, I'm sure, has heard, Governor DeWine has came out today and said that in all schools, we'll be doing remote learning for the end of the school year. Something we anticipated, something that we're working on, need to work on, and I'll fill in more details about that later on in my report.
Wonderful. Thank you. Ms. Logan?
I don't have any comments this evening. I will have a presentation later.
Okay, thank you. This brings us to the first public comment section of the evening. Just a reminder, this is a public comment section for those interested in commenting on items on our agenda. Those should have been submitted by 4:00 PM this evening. Ms. Logan, do we have any?
We do not. We did not receive any emails wishing to have any public, public comments for this section or the section later on in the agenda.
Okay, thank you. And just wanted to let the community know that we are actively seeking for our next meeting ways to engage in public comment during the actual meeting itself. And we believe that we have a way to do that. We just need a little bit more time to get the bugs worked out so that everything works appropriately. But we also want to mention to our community as well that you can always go, just like we showed at the last meeting, you can go to lakotaonline.com. And when you go to the board section, there's a button that you can click that button and email the entire board if there's anything that you want to communicate with us. And we all read those emails on a regular basis as well. Okay, moving on to the next section on the agenda is Board Reports. First up is Board Policy Committee. I don't believe we have any new news to share with you. Todd, did you have anything?
No, we have not met, obviously. I know there were some Neola stuff that Rob had, but I think that can wait. Is Rob on?
He's here.
I think he's muted.
Yeah.
All right.
There is a piece that we're working on with our attorneys in Neola about going through COVID-19 in the shutdown, but we'll bring that to the board next meeting.
Right, and this is probably an appropriate time to say too, that we were, we were supposed to have a resolution on the agenda today that was basically a resolution that was going to approve the quote unquote Blizzard bags. It basically allows us the opportunity to count our hours that we're doing in remote learning. Because of the governor's announcement today, however, that has to go back to legal. And so we can, that can be retroactive at our next meeting when we pass that resolution. I apologize to the board. That literally occurred a half hour, 45 minutes before the meeting. Okay, all right. And then the other thing I'd bring up a policy too, and Todd, we, we probably need to be having conversations though, as we start to look at the longevity that we might be facing with virtual meetings, to just make sure that policy is aligned to public participation and things like that. I would just want to make sure that we are where we need to be and making sure that we're following board policy. I see Mr. Vogelmann's on.
Yes.
Did you have anything to add for policy?
No, Mr. Parnell kind of hit the nail on the head. We do have some policies that are ready for approval from the winter update. But nothing is pressing time as far as needs to be done this, this spring or even early this summer. A lot of it will impact what we do in the fall, so there's not a, there's not a urgent need. But as mentioned, it may get to the point where it may have to come before you guys in a virtual setting. But nothing of great importance needs to be approved at this time.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Rob.
That moves us to our Community Engagement Committee.
Uh, we have obviously canceled all of the remaining community conversations for the year. We had a virtual DPC meeting, I think, two weeks ago, Julie, or last week, two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Just so Matt could update TPC on the events of COVID and what we were doing. And then Matt had a coffee, a virtual Facebook Live coffee. That's, I mean, Julie, do you have anything else? I can't.
We were supposed to be doing our Barbassu Volunteer Spirit Award ceremony, so we're disappointed that we weren't able to do that. And we're looking at ways to recognize all of our volunteers virtually. But we aren't going to be able to do that in person, unfortunately.
Yep, that's all.
How did the coffee go? I wasn't able to attend.
Um, I think it went well. Matt did a good job. It's hard when you do those, I'm going to speak for Matt right now. It's hard when you do those, I think, to keep up with the questions. As you're trying to speak and look at the questions, I feel like that's hard to do just from a standpoint of watching. But I think there were a lot of people on, you know, on there and a lot of positive comments. What do you think, Matt?
It went well. We had 130, I believe, people that were watching live. And my daughter was handing me post-it notes of questions, so I got to them as quick as I could. And I got most of them, I think.
Yeah.
Follow-up on that, too. We did a Facebook Live today at 3:00 after Governor DeWine's statement. And so, and then we recorded that and pushed that out too, just to be transparent and push things out as we know them with our community, so.
But with 120 people, it sounds like that was the biggest coffee you've had.
It was.
It was.
Well, I mean, we could still do them in person, but we could like, you know, push it up through Facebook at the same time.
Yeah.
Very, very cool. I mean, I think that, you know, I don't think face-to-face is important, right? Us engaging with our community is really important and having that experience, being able to stand in front of someone. But I also think that leveraging these new virtual ways of connecting with our community is a win. When you have 120 people going to the coffee, which we know we've never seen that many people go, I think that we've reached a new pathway to them, which is pretty cool.
Right, that is, that is a good, good point, Brad.
All right, Butler Tech?
We've been, we have a meeting tomorrow night virtually. Again, they're facing many of the same things we are and are doing an announcement to their community. They did just reschedule their graduation to August 3rd. At the Centos Center is their current plan, if they are able to go forward with that, depending on the numbers. And that's the update there until the meeting tomorrow, so.
Thank you. Legislative?
Matt, you want to go first?
If you say Matt.
Matt, go first.
Lot of discussions with BASSA, with the governor's office, with Southwest Superintendent in terms of everything going on with schools and remote learning. I have a meeting with BASSA tomorrow. Had a meeting with superintendents and the governors, representatives of the governor's office last week. We knew that the announcement today was probably coming either today or tomorrow. A lot of conversations about what does this look like in the fall, and it's way too early to tell, but I'll get into that in my report shortly. That's really all I've had. Aside from, the other thing I'll say is, we've had some Zoom calls across the state with BASSA and with some representatives of the governor's off, office also, just talking about steps moving forward. So everybody's still trying to figure this out, and we are too. That's it.
Jenny, do you want to go next?
I really don't have anything other than what Matt just shared as an update. And, you know, we're, we're looking to see, from my point of view, the funding levels for the next few years, which I'll talk about in my update coming up.
Billy, do you have anything?
Um, not really. Just, you know, OSBA is conducting conference calls weekly, and I've been on a couple of them, just sharing ideas and, you know, letting everybody's, what everybody's doing. But, you know, that's really all I have.
Last one was actually focused on graduation and what different districts are doing for graduation. And there were quite a few ideas that came out of that that we might consider as being part of our process.
Yeah, they had, I think, a superintendent, was it from Southeastern, talking about a couple of graduations they're doing. And everybody recognizes too, that every district's going to be different based on size. But Linda's right, there are some good ideas for recognizing our seniors at the end of the year.
A lot of creativity across the, across the state. I did receive something through the Federal Relations Network, and it's calling for a call to action around coronavirus recovery assistance to school districts, and particularly as it concerns flexibility with IDEA and our students with special needs. I'll forward this out to the legislative team and see if we'd like to put together a response to forward to our federal representatives. That's all I've got.
I've got a quick question. So prior to COVID-19, prior to the stay-at-home orders, we were pretty engaged in the conversation around Ed Choice. And I meant to bring this up at the last meeting, just as an update, but it probably would be helpful for our community to be able to hear where that is and in relation to COVID-19 and everything that's going on. Could one of you provide that?
Matt probably will speak to it best, but that was left at levels that were the same for this year.
Yes, it's changed.
It's basically on hold for the next year.
Okay.
I don't think the issue is resolved. I think it's just on hold.
Right, right.
That's exactly correct. Nothing new, but you're right, Brad, that was a big hot topic. Linda said nothing's changed. It's just in a holding pattern for, for another year.
Sure. Yeah, I knew that we all had heard, but then I was thinking about how much we've been talking about it to our community, and it kind of struck me as, have we ever updated our community if they weren't? I mean, there was so much in the COVID-19 legislation that was going through that it could have got lost. And so just letting our community know that it is put on hold.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Great. Okay, anything else for Legislative?
Nope.
All right, moving on. Oh, absolutely. So next section of the agenda is new business. Do we have any new business?
Nope, I don't.
Okay.
No, but thank you for leaving that, Brad. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I actually do have a new business item.
Okay.
I've, I've gotten some communications from Chris Bissards on the facilities committee and, and whatnot. I thought we were putting that on pause. Based on the economy and the coronavirus, I can tell you right now, there's no way in ever living hell, we're going to pass a levy to build any new buildings, or do we even need them, based on the new e-learning and all that? I, I want this thing put on pause, and which I thought we were doing. It's amazing, the people in the education industry have not had their pay cut and, and not been furloughed, and like the rest of us have. I don't understand, I want to know if we're still paying this architectural firm, because if we are, we need to stop right now and put it on pause for 12 months. That's my new business. Thank you.
So I just want to respond to that. So at the last meeting, we had talked about moving and somewhat hitting pause on the facilities committee work. But that required us to meet again, to actually look at the options and narrow some of those options, because that work had already been laid out and had been done. But to your point, Todd, I think one of the significant areas that we need to focus on, and I'm not saying that we need to rally this thing up and come to the community for any type of conversation at this point. However, I do believe we need to have our ear to the ground and be thinking about the shifts and changes that we've gone through with e-learning, and look at how does that impact our future needs of facilities? All along, we've talked about that this, this facilities plan honestly could be status quo and not ever needing another dollar from the community, not needing X, Y, or Z. It could be a cost-saving measure, it could be a lot of different things. I think, I, I still believe that it's, it's irresponsible just to hit pause on the work, knowing that we have facilities that are aging out, and we have funds that we need to invest, that we have funds to invest through the permanent improvement dollars. And how are we doing that in the most financially sound way? And so the process moving forward may look different, but I think hitting pause on that process is probably not the right decision.
Well, I disagree. I disagree with you, and the funds that we have, we don't know what's going to happen with the incoming funds over the next two years, based on the economy. And I don't think we should be spending taxpayer dollars with an architectural firm right now. I, I just think we should hit the pause button, like we said we were going to do.
Jenny, do you want to speak to this?
I was going to say, yeah, maybe Jen.
So a lot of the cost for a facilities plan, I can tell you, is paid for through the, after you figure out the funding of a project. So while we're in planning stages, a lot of those consultants that would have a pretty big bill coming forward, that, most of those things come in at the end of that, and then they're paid out when you, basically, when you issue debt to pay for buildings. So I will get a, a summary of what is going on with our architect and what is being paid to let you know that. And also, as far as the planning for our facilities, I, I believe the timeline is an issue right now. We had a very aggressive timeline, and I think we all agree, there's no way we're going to meet that timeline that was in place before all of this happened. And so I think that's to Brad's point, we came together to say, okay, we know the timeline is now out the window. It does give us more time to think about that remote learning, what does this look like, and all of that. And also allows us to have more time when we do get to engage with our community again on this topic in the future. So that's what I have to have at this, at this point.
I do want to state that I agree with Todd's point. I think that this conversation can be seen as very tone-deaf. I mentioned that in our last video meeting. I think Todd makes a good point that we need to be very sensitive about where our families, where our residents and businesses and taxpayers are. And I'm concerned about the same thing that he is.
In, in the last meeting that we had earlier this week, things came up with the architect, with the people in the Zoom room about the timeline now, what it looks like for our kids, what the, what the remote learning brings, because no matter what anyone says, education is not going to look the same once we get back at it. There's going to be the best of remote learning still coming through, I think, and it'll look a lot different. So those are things we have to factor in and consider, and things that we had no idea were on anyone's radar three months ago.
So what specifically does that mean? Is the committee going to continue to meet? I'm not sure I understand what's going to happen going forward.
Well, at our last, at our last meeting, and I thought, we'll, we'll get some more information out from the meeting from earlier in the week. But it was, we were not, I don't think, and Jenny, correct me if I'm wrong, or Brad, but I don't think we anticipate going on to the ballot anytime soon.
No. No, I mean, the way I continue to view this is, we have 23 buildings and a lot of facilities that we maintain. We may have a shrinking pot of money. We need to fully understand what those facilities look like, what the needs of those facilities are, and have a long-range plan to address how we, as a district, are going to maintain the biggest investment by our community by far. And I, you know, if, if the mindset is, we're only doing this to go for a bond, to build shiny, then yeah, no, we shouldn't be doing that. But if the mindset is, we, as a district, our size, with 100-plus million-dollar budget, have a facilities plan in place to attack the future needs of our district and our buildings, our facilities, I, I, I think it's irresponsible. I believe personally, it's irresponsible to stop this process. And, you know, again, I, I hear what you're saying, and I respect what you're saying. I just, I just disagree with that.
We haven't even...
I don't think the, I don't, I'm not trying to stop the process. What I'm saying is, we don't know what the end game is. So until we know more information about what we're going to have financially, and what we're going to need in the future, we need to hit the pause button, at least for a bit here, until we see, see how things play out here in the next few months. And we don't even know if, if we're going to have classroom school in the fall yet. You know, it's, it's, these are the craziest times ever in my life. And, you know, I, I, I talked to several parents today and some kids, and it's, you know, it's, it's kind of heartbreaking in a way. But we have to, we have to look at the future, but we don't know what the future's going to be. So I just think as far as the, the state program and trying to put a levy or a, a bond issue on, we just need to hit the pause button. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, it sounds like that we're not putting a bond levy on the ballot anytime soon, according to Jenny. So, I mean, that part of your...
Well, I know, but that was part of the state program. We had to do it by November.
Right.
But I'm not sure, I mean, I'm hoping we're not spending a lot of money now. I mean, there's no reason to.
I mean, I don't see any reason.
As Jenny mentioned before, they were, they get their money at the end, because that's more of an incentive to...
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think we have hit pause because the, the November timeline, where we were going to try to figure out how to fund it, is, is out the window now. But we're continuing to look at what the needs of our facilities are. And then if we want to get back into that program, we would have to reapply and go through that process again.
And which we knew.
Still looking at everything.
I don't think there's any reason to stop looking ahead, but yeah, we already know we're not going to have to worry about it.
We don't want to look too far ahead, because we just don't know what the horizon is. That's, that's my point. We, we need some, we need to find out what's going to happen, at least over the next six, six months or so.
Sure, sure.
Well, but I think if we've also found out that anything can happen, you can have the best laid plans and things can change as well, so, I mean...
That's right. Yeah, well, so then it's better to have no plans at all.
Well, part of, part of the work that's been done, right, and, oh, go for it, Matt.
No, go ahead, Brad. Sorry.
No, I was just going to say, part of the work that we're doing now is based on Jenny's team as well, understanding operational costs and things like that associated with buildings. So there's some behind-the-scenes stuff that's happening that will still need to be done no matter what as we look forward. So I guess the question is, do we, is, do we hit pause on that work as well? You know, and Jenny, I'd love to know your thinking.
I think we still need to do the work, because just like we have a five-year financial plan, we have that same five-year capital needs plan, whether we have a full-blown facilities project or not. We still have, like you mentioned, everybody has mentioned, we have a lot of buildings with a lot of needs. They're aging. So I think whether we go into a, a, a big full-blown master plan and fund, fund it partially or layer it starting in, we've got needs of our facilities, and we, that work will still be beneficial no matter what.
Right.
You know, just like our, the roofs on our buildings. I mean, making sure that when we go to do those projects, that they're in alignment with the OFCC, if we do want to partner with them in the future. And so all of this work will still benefit us, and I think we still need to keep doing the work behind the scenes and be ready whenever that day comes.
Right.
As, as one individual board member to follow up on what Jenny just said, I would find it really helpful for the committee to develop a very clearly delineated needs versus wants list. I think we had not reached that point of really understanding, these are the maintenance we absolutely have to do, versus here are some things we'd really like to consider. It'd be very helpful to have that laid out for us.
Well, my, the thing is, we don't know what the needs are, and we're not going to know for, for a while, but that's...
Well, I think we do know some of those specifics based on what Jenny just said. We know there are roofs that need to be done. That's the list I would like to see.
You still have to consider...
Short term, yes, but as far as the master facilities plan, everything's changed. We don't, we don't know what the needs are going to be.
We can always review those assessments. Those assessments are finalized now with the OFCC, and we can review those to, to look at, what did they highlight, are those needs of our facilities that we would need to do to bring them up to those standards? So we can, we've got, we've got lots today then, we'll continue to get more, and we can dive as deep as you would like to dive.
Could we try filtering down to what the needs are at this point, that we need to be considering?
Well, we, I guess we would need to start talking about, you know, defined needs. Are those major projects that we believe we need? Are those needs that the OFCC has determined through the assessments? We can, we can start with showing what our five-year plan looks like even without a facilities project. We could start there.
Seeing that, and that's where I, you know, I think about that, right? Okay, we come up with the needs list, and we understand clearly what needs to happen across the district. A facilities plan prioritizes that money that's being spent. We know we could be dumping a lot of money into West Freshman at this point. Right? So i-if West Freshman is not a part of the master's facility plan, then we're going to do a lot more to Band-Aid and piecemeal that rather than investing money. But if there's no plan, how are those judgment calls being made? Are we just going to say, well, you know what, West Freshman, it's got water coming up through the floor, so let's rip that out again and redo that at a cost of X, Y, or Z? Or is there a different solution that will get us to a point, because we know we might want to decommission that building down the line? That's where I struggle with not having this bigger plan that we're using as a true north, and just doing a needs list and saying, this is what we have to spend money on it. I, I think we do need to see the needs list. I just struggle with not having that, that plan that we're looking towards. And I get, things are going to shift, things are going to change, but with any plan, just like Jenny mentioned, the five-year forecast, that shifts and changes all the time, so.
Haven't, Brad. I think what we're both talking about is the same thing. I'm talking about the needs and then consideration of the options to address those needs. But first, we need to see what the needs are. You may have more access to that as a part of the facilities committee. I do not believe I have that information, that I need to understand that fully. So that's what I'm requesting. I'm not talking about our options for addressing those needs yet. I would just like to understand what the needs are.
Okay. Jenny, is that something your team can put the, I've seen documents outlining those items through the, I don't know if they're in one document or a clear document.
I, I think honestly, it's about taking our, our facilities planning that we do internally and cross-referencing it to the OFCC assessment.
Sure, sure.
Because I think you have to look at both.
I think Chris has all that.
Yeah, we, we've got it. I think it's just a matter of organizing it in a way that, that will make sense for everybody, but yeah.
Then let's do that. Let's, let's have our next step be the board looking at that kind of prioritize, not prioritize list, just that master list of what are we running after, and however long you look out, if it is similar to the five-year forecast, looking out five years. That way, the board can at least have a baseline and understanding of the capital needs that are happening within the district and some of those buildings that are hotspots. We can make that our next step, if that's fine with the board. Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, great.
Essentially, I was walking the OFCC with Chris's list.
Exactly, that's exactly right. Yeah, some of the work, I mean, it's the work that's being, is happening behind the scenes with Chris and his team as the OFCC is kinda moving forward. It's just bringing it to the board, so, um, which is never a bad thing. So we'll, we'll make sure that we do that with the team. Okay? Any other new business? Okay, uh, seeing none, we'll move on to administrative reports. Um, we're going to get a remote learning update from Matt.
Thank you. Uh, just as, just as a reminder out there, the information related to, um, our seniors and the graduation dates now in July and August, with rain dates back and those up at East and West Stadium. So thanks to, uh, Rob Vogelmann and, and Elgin Carter, Suzanne Davis, uh, for their work on that and getting those dates lined up. Hopefully, we can get something accomplished in terms of a graduation ceremony for our seniors. I too have seen all the, um, things that other people are doing, and so we're combing through all of those too, just to acknowledge this group of kids who obviously didn't have the experience they all thought they were, their parents thought they were. So we are, we are on that. You know, Governor Dewine today talked a lot about the fall in terms of the unknown. And so the executive team has been working on what plans might look like. I mean, in a, in a perfect world, which doesn't feel like it's very perfect right now, we'd be back to traditional with whatever the best of remote learning is going on now, moving to August. We've talked about that, we've talked about what happens if we have to start the year in remote learning, where when this happened in this situation for the current school year, it's a year to do remote learning where teachers already have relationships and connect with kids. But if you start a year with remote learning, what does that look like? And that, that's a little bit more challenging. And then there's probably a blended learning component to all this that we can look at as well, or it might be some remote, uh, but might also be in-person. And to everyone's comments earlier, we don't know what the spacing requirements are gonna be or what the distancing is gonna be, so we might have to look at staggered schedules for kids. We might have to look at, um, not having lunch in cafeterias. We might not put kids on bu- on full buses. Um, those are all things that we are sort of putting on, on the whiteboard now to figure out how we're gonna solve these things. But it's, it's way too early to make any call on any of that because a lot can change between now and, and the middle of August. So, um, I didn't wanna mention that. But I do think there's also an opportunity here for some of the remote learning components to, to carry through when we do go back into school. You gotta think it wasn't, it was less than two years where the board gave the blessing for Chromebooks for our kids. And think of where our kids would be now if we didn't make that decision, if you all didn't make that decision, um, as we move forward with, um, technology in our district. So I was thankful for that, and, um, our kids are now one-to-one grades three through 12. And so, um, credit to Todd and his team for making that happen. I do, um, I get a lot of emails every day from, it's talking about, you know, the positives and some of the negatives too. Um, but I do have to give credit to our staff because it does seem like it's going pretty well. Um, it's not perfect, there are issues, uh, but it has gone pretty well. And we, another thing that, um, the team has done a pretty well, uh, job of doing is surveying feedback about remote learning and what's, what are our kids thinking about it? What are our parents think about it? And so I'll get that out to all of you once that window closes, but it's still, the survey's still open right now. Another thing that we are considering or discussing and having thoughts about is what the fall looks like. Lakota and for all schools might be different even within the same district. I mean, there might be some parents that want their kids to do remote learning because they're not sure about wanting their kids close, in close contact with others. So we're trying to manage, what does that look like, um, for different segments of our population of our kids? And so this is gonna be a heavy lift, uh, one that I know that we'll be able to do, but, um, this is gonna be a, a lot of work. Um, the other thing that I think all of you know about is we're looking for the best way to have sort of a closing house, uh, as opposed to an open house for our kids. They can come in and get their things. Hopefully, they can see some of their classmates and their teachers. We're just waiting on when that's gonna be safe and how do we do that? And how do we manage that, uh, with, with the size of groups? So that is also on our agenda as well. There's been a lot of talk around the state about, um, collaboration, building this out with remote learning. Going into next school year, I have a meeting virtually Wednesday on that, and another one next Monday on that, um, as we talk about what resources we can pull together and who's doing what. So, um, any comments, questions for me? Um, I tried to hit as much as I could. I'm hoping most of that you knew about, some of that might have been new information. Um, just as a side note, I think because of all this, our kindergarten numbers are way down for registration. So we're gonna try to put a push out there about that, which it makes sense because people are just trying to survive right now, but, um, I just wanted to mention that. Too. We're trying to communicate all this as much as we can. Questions, comments, concerns, I'll shut up now.
I don't have any.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Jenny, the floor here.
Jenny.
Adam, can you, there it is. Okay, so tonight, I just wanted to start the conversation about the five-year forecast. It has to be adopted and filed with the state by the end of May. So tonight, I thought we would just talk about the assumptions we made in our last forecast and the things we should consider differently. So next slide, Adam. Okay, so when we look at our revenues and this kinda, we've talked a lot about this, about what's going on and, and making sure that we are aware of how this will impact us. So right now, the county, the Butler County, um, Auditor's Office is going through and reappraising all of the value in the county right now. And those values will be, um, increased, and then your taxes that you pay in 2021 will be based on that new value. We estimated a 5% increase for that reappraisal the last time we did, uh, the forecast, which I think was conservative. And I believe that 5% is okay to keep in there. I will say though, um, as we look at the next update, I think it's reasonable to keep that flat and to say zero, um, just based on the unknowns that we, um, have in front of us right now. We've also had a lot of new construction. Go ahead.
Um, I don't know how much of that is, uh, commercial real estate, but I can tell you, commercial real estate valuations are gonna go down by at least 12%. So we need to factor that in.
And so that 5% increase will is the, is everybody, the residents, the business. And, and that's what we saw back, um, 2008, 2009 during those time periods. We did see business and industry, those values. On that, we saw new construction, tank. Um, so I'm just looking at trying to learn from the past and say, we're not gonna see those increases. We might see some decreases, um, and to keep it flat.
You're factoring all that in.
I am, and delinquencies, we'll probably see an increase in delinquencies, and how's that gonna impact us? And timing of payments, if they extend deadlines on when you can pay your, your real estate taxes, well, that will impact when we get our money, so it could impact our cash flow. Um, that's on the tax revenue side. On the state side, um, I think we all heard the governor weeks ago say that he has talked to his cabinet members and asked each one of them to bring forward a plan for a 20% reduction in their budget. So if we looked at a 20% reduction beginning next year, um, from the state, I, I think it's reasonable to put that in our forecast because that's what we're hearing from the state level. Just to keep a perspective, um, 20% to us would be about $10 million. So it's not pennies. Um, also, we know that casino revenue, while that's not a big piece for us, it's still something that's gonna be impacted. Um, and our interest income, while we've been, um, having some, some nice, uh, luck, if you will, with interest income, that's, that's gonna be, um, reduced significantly as well. Next slide. As far as our expenditure assumptions, we do have union contracts that go through 2021 next year. Beyond that, right now at this time, we had a 3% in our forecast predicted beyond the negotiated agreements. It is too hard, to your point earlier, Todd, we are seeing people in our community who are losing their jobs or taking pay cuts. It's too hard to put any kind of increase in there into our forecast at this moment. There's just so many unknowns beyond 2021. Uh, healthcare rates, we've got a 7.5% in there assumed after 2021, which is the time period that we have negotiated with our healthcare MMO. Um, also looking at self-funding options, um, would that be a better, um, cost option for us? Purchase services, looking at every vendor contract, including our transportation, and reviewing all of those, uh, looking at a PD plan so that we can look at lower cost while maximizing, you know, we're doing a lot of things remotely now, so I think we're, you know, there's a lot of, of things during this, you always have to look for the silver lining. We are learning a lot of things from this particular moment that I hope that we won't forget when we do return back to some normalcy. Supplies and equipment, focusing on that remote learning even more so. Thank goodness, like Matt said, we had already been doing a lot of that, but this has kind of fo- forced that focus even heavier in that area. And what will that look for, look like for us? And what will the priorities be there? Next slide. So in summary, whole lot we don't know, but we do know that it's not status quo. We need to be changing some of those assumptions to try to get a better picture of what we, um, believe the, the reality is gonna look like. The other, that, that last thing there, cash, cash is king. You know, everybody talks about cash is king, and luckily, um, we are in a much better financial situation this time around than what we were during the recession, um, to weather the storm. So we're, we're a lot luckier than some of our neighbors. Um, but the other thing there that I just added is credibility is also king. And so we have to remember that with our community, um, as we move through this, uh, financial different, financially difficult time for our community members, and it's, it's going to hit us too. We are not going to be isolated from this, so that's it, more to come.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks Jenny, I agree with what you're saying. I think it's a pretty good, realistic approach of things we've got to address.
Thank you.
I agree.
Thanks Jenny, appreciate that.
Okay, um, let's see here. I guess our, uh, next item on the agenda is treasurer's recommendations to approve board minutes and the approved financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move, Kelly. Kelly, Jenny.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, discussion? All right, Ms. Logan.
This is Casper.
Yes.
This is O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Parnell.
Yes.
This is Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Level.
Yes. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, it's superintendent's recommendations. We have A through F, personnel items, memorandum of understandings for both the certified and classified employee evaluations, um, approve of a base bid, for Grayback Construction, multi-year contracts with Pro Source, DCS Technologies, and approved donations. Do I have a motion to approve items A through F?
So moved, this is Julie.
I'll second, Kelly.
Thank you, discussion? Okay, not hearing any discussion. Jenny, would like you, would you like to call roll, please?
This is Schaefer.
Yes.
This is Casper.
Yes.
This is O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Parnell.
Yes.
Mr. Level.
Yes. This moves us to our last public comment section of the evening, but, um, as indicated by Ms. Logan earlier, there are no public comments that were submitted by 4:00 PM. So we will move, um, past that and on to our closing comments for this evening. We'll start with Mr. Parnell.
Just, just a couple of things. Um, I, again, we're in uncertain times and, uh, we're, we have a lot of unknowns, and we're gonna try to work it out the, the best we can. Um, I feel bad for a lot of our, uh, especially our seniors. Um, I've heard from a few of those, uh, and their parents, but, uh, we're gonna do the best we can to, uh, to send them out the right way. I, I do have several texts and emails that I'm gonna forward on to the board, regarding, uh, Matt Miller and the job he's done. All of them extremely positive. So, Matt, I'm glad you're here. You, you've shown great leadership, and I thank you.
You are way too nice, and my team does not have enough credit, but thanks.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Todd. Julie?
Uh, just thank you for everyone's continued hard work and the uncertainty that is all around us currently.
Thank you. Linda?
So thank you to both Matt and Jenny. I appreciate the time that goes into thinking about what lies ahead and how to avoid those pitfalls. Following up on comments both Todd and I made in, in this meeting and I think in previous meetings, just about being sensitive to our community. And I feel, Jenny said lucky, I actually think that it was the result of a lot of hard work to be in a position of stability. And I'm, I'm very glad at this point in time that we find ourselves there, but many of our families and many of our businesses are not. So just to be very sensitive to that and not tone deaf in what we're trying to do as we're looking forward. So thanks to everybody, stay safe, keep our family safe.
Thank you. Kelly?
Um, I just would ditto everybody's comments about Matt and his executive team and Jenny and all the hard work that they're doing to kind of keep us afloat and keep kids learning. Also to our staff, our teachers, uh, I think I've seen some such positive things that will come out of remote learning. Um, teachers that I know that would never in a million years said they would have used the computer or used remote learning, who are now saying they can't wait to incorporate it into their classroom once we get back. So I think that's the positive that's come out of that, as tough as it's been and a struggle. I think some of the positives that our communities and our parents and, like Todd, the accolades that I get from Matt and his team daily are a lot. So thank you.
Thank you. Jenny?
Um, just wanted to, to mention that, um, my heart is also with Talawanda Schools right now. Um, lost a colleague, Mike Davis, um, to the coronavirus, so it's, it's very personal now, um, but thinking of his district, um, he was a, a great colleague, um, and I, I enjoyed his sense of, uh, style as well as his sense of humor. So just thinking about him right now, um, as well as we are working on, uh, issuing a lot of refunds back to our students, um, based on spring sports, based on seniors for some course fees that they didn't get to take advantage of. So, um, my staff is working, um, on getting that together so that we can issue those, um, this week because we believe our families need it. So we're working on that also.
Thank you. Matt?
Just a real quick thanks to our parents and, and our teachers that are just the collaboration between both sides. And I know it's not easy, and it's not ideal, but, um, I, I'm thankful for the work that everyone's put in. And, um, it's just been good to support our kids and, and those, again, it's not ideal, um, but we're making the best of it, so just thanks to, uh, those that are in the trenches and a few of you that are on- But we're making the best, but so just thanks to those that are in the trenches and a few of you that are on this Zoom call now. That have parents or that have children at home that you're, you're doing work and school things. So thanks.
Yeah, Todd, I appreciate you calling out and just thanking Matt. I, I think that Jenny, you as well. I mean, these are hard times for everybody. And I think that, you know. The true test of leadership is that your, your strong leadership and the foundation you built can weather the storm, right? And so I think we're seeing that. And we appreciate your transparency. We appreciate just your team and everything that they're doing. And I know just from a parent perspective and. You know, the spouse of a teacher, just how much work is happening behind the scenes to make this lift? It's not easy. And like I said last time, the parents are making an equal lift at home. It's hard. I just want to mention too, you know, at the beginning of the year, who would have thought when we said we're all in this together and being our theme, that this would really carry through? I mean. Matt, you really hit that one out of the ballpark. But you know, I was thinking about, you know, again, to the comments made earlier, you know, I mean. Our community is our community and, and our schools don't operate in isolation. And so there are a lot of businesses out there right now. If you have the means and you can safely do it, you know, supporting our small businesses in the community right now. I, well, we ate out tonight, went up to a local restaurant up there at Liberty Center and it, it hit me. It's quiet. It is quiet up there, eerily quiet, right? And so, I mean, it felt good to be able to go up there and buy something from a local business, but I think just to our community. Recognizing that we're all in this together. And so we need to do our best to carry our community through this. That's all I had.
Brad, may I throw in one reminder, please?
Sure.
I should have done it earlier. I had invited all of you to the Westchester Liberty Chamber Alliance Government Issues Committee meeting on Friday morning. As a Zoom meeting and we will have. Butler County Commissioner TC Roger, State Representative George Lang and Congressman Warren Davidson. And it'll be a panel discussion and then an opportunity for questions if you'd like to join into that virtual meeting with us.
Great. And I think I emailed you back. I'd love to attend. Is that appropriate? Like if we can't stay the whole time to come in and out of it?
Absolutely. Just leave quietly.
As long as they turn the doorbell off.
Just don't make it noisy.
Okay, great. Okay, wonderful. So that brings us to the adjournment of the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Linda?
Second, this is Julie.
Fantastic. Jenny?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes. This is where I bang my gavel. All right. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.